Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Room call.
Brad Cassoon. Tobin is absent. Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Jean-François.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
Pizarro Nubrigas is absent. We have a quorum.
Okay. No minutes tonight?
No.
Okay. Correspondents?
Yeah, we have two correspondents. One from the Arbor Day Foundation congratulating Middletown on earning recognition as a Tree City for USA.
Received and filed.
And we also have a correspondence from Ag and Markant about the Dole Control Officer Inspection Report, which is both past satisfactory on Portervis and also Middletown.
Received and filed.
And that is all for correspondents.
For the good of the order, anyone who wants to address this council, please step forward, state your name and your business, please.
Yes. Hello, my name is Alfredo Pacheco. I'm an organizer for the Royal Westminster Hudson. And today I want to talk about what's going on in our community. We've been receiving calls on daily basis, like moms calling us to what can they do, ICEs knocking on the door, and the kids are crying. And it's really heartbreaking because the kids are crying and you hear them, like they are afraid they're gonna take their mom. We've been doing so much training about know your rights, so they don't open the door, but the kids still have that fear in them now. So what is gonna happen in two, three years with those psychological disorders that now they're gonna... These are kids, three-years-old kids, two-years-old kids, thinking about losing their family, their mom. She's a single mom. She wasn't there for 24 hours because she was afraid to go out. How do we know if they have enough food in there for the kids, enough supplies for them? Because they were not prepared. They didn't know that was gonna happen. And the way that the police, the ICE officers are acting is really unbelievable, cursing them on the door, telling them that they're coming back, in a very bad way, knowing that the kid's crying and they still don't care about it. It's just sad. I was just right in Middletown, in places where you usually get a lot of Latino kids playing, there's none of them out there. None of them. They're home with their parents because they are afraid, because they believe that they're gonna lose their parents. What are we gonna do? It's like, I don't know what to do. I wish I could split in many parts and be with them, but I can't. So I ask you for your support. If you know anything, lawyers, anybody that can provide, guards, watch, just watch, you know, like neighborhood kind of watch. If you know anything, please let us know, and stand up for the kids. If you think that the parents don't deserve to be here, do it for the kids. We need to protect our community because they are the ones that are affected the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address this committee? Please, sir, come up, identify yourself, and you've got four minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Massey.
You're welcome.
Good evening, folks. My name's Matthew Kelly. I'm a lifelong resident of... Sorry, I wanted to say district because I'm a graduate of Middletown. I've lived here my entire life. That's why some people know me from the district. I apologize for that. I'm here as a neighbor to the city of Middletown, because I'm currently, even though I have a Middletown mailing address, I'm currently technically now the town of Walk Hill. And yesterday, Mr. DeSefano was nice enough to give me a little bit of time in his office to talk to me about some concerns that some constituents from the town of Walk Hill have. You might be aware of that. I'm a huge fan of the city of Middletown, all the projects that Middletown does. I think you all know that, and anybody who here knows me, I bleed blue and white. The one thing I wasn't happy with was the lack of communication or transparency from the city of Middletown to the town of Walk Hill. I'm a huge fan of the outdoors and hiking and things that are going on. I've been on the Heritage Trail. I know it's continuing through Middletown. But some things that some people didn't take, maybe was taken for granted, was the impact... Sorry, I usually don't use a microphone. Was the impact that it has on the people in the town of Walk Hill. Part of the plans for the whole revitalization and expansion of the reservoir trails and everything butts right up to my neighborhood. The visitor center that would be in the second phase of the whole project, anytime you go somewhere and you have a visitor center, a visitor center isn't the ending point, even though that's the furthest part from the city of Middletown, a visitor center is the starting point for where, for anybody who's an avid hiker or outdoors enthusiast goes. The problem is, is where that visitor center is butts up to $8.7 million of real estate that people have invested their livelihood in to be on a dead-end street, to have no traffic near them, to have nothing surrounding them, that at the end of the day, we come home to the sanctity of our neighborhood and not to be disturbed, which is now all about to be changed. I already know some of the residents on my street are already prepping their houses to put on the market for sale. And I know, I don't want the city of Middletown's expansion, please don't take it this way, I do not want the city of Middletown's expansion of the hiking and biking trails that has the potential here. I do not want that stopped. I was just hoping for a little more open communication and transparency and discussion with the people that it actually affects, because that hadn't been done. So I was just really, like I said, I just wanted to put that out there for food for thought. I know the project would still move forward, I know that, but I just wanted you to make it, realize that on just one entrance alone, because there's entrances on Abramson Road, Highland Lakes Road, Mapes Road, on just one of the entrances alone, there's $8.7 million of real estate. And the only reason I have that exact number is that's as of Friday, the fair market value for all those prices. And I know the real estate market changes. Some people might say our value of our homes would go up by being so close to it. That's a moot point to my residents. Like I said, the people on my street already have a few people finishing renovations on their house. Some have already been in touch with the real estate agents to sell because they want nothing to do with being open to what was a dead-end street, which now might be a traffic flow pattern. We don't know what the parking situation would be, the effect that it would have. We have kids that ride their bikes, and this is something of the past that some of you might remember from when you were kids. They ride their bikes to the corner, leave their bikes at the stop sign, at the end of the day, get off the school bus, get back on their bikes, ride their bikes up and down the street. If that entrance opens, that's a thing of the past for our neighborhood. My wife already wants to know when I'm having, you know, an in-depth security system installed on the house with cameras and everything, because she's, she's, right now, I can almost guarantee, I have a basic system on my house. It's probably turned on right now because I'm not home and she's already nervous. We've already kicked people out at the end of the street that have tried to trespass to go in there. So we avidly try to help protect the city of Middletown's investment. We're just hoping that you would protect ours as well and keep that in mind. Thank you for your time.
I am gonna answer your... I've read the report that you dropped off, and it was in everyone's mailbox.
Thank you.
Yesterday, the mayor, Commissioner Twill and I met, and in fact, today, the mayor, Commissioner Twill, supervisor Diana came over.
Meeting with Mr. Diana today, yes.
And we met.
Thank you.
Excuse me, and a response is being crafted, and we'll get to you as soon as possible
to answer it. That's fine.
And I know that's what you were looking for.
Right. You know we're respectful. We weren't expecting anything today. We know we're not expecting things to change. We know that plan is still gonna move forward. We're still happy that the city of Middletown's gonna have hiking and biking trails. We're just asking for some consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address this committee?
And good evening, members of the common council, President, Honorable President Massey, Honorable Clerk. And I'm here as the liaison from the Middletown School District to just report, even though our children are off enjoying their summer, a lot of things, great things are happening in our district. For one, we have in our summer camps. We had our camp two weeks ago. This week and next week, we're having our music camp, which will culminate with a music concert. So our children in the summer are having fun. My own kids are having a blast in the camps. And again, our school district continues to cooperate with Middletown Parks and Recreation for the city camps, which also offers our kids wonderful opportunity to enjoy the outdoors, get a swim, play basketball, and other great things. So we're grateful for our partnership with the city of Middletown. Our district is moving forward with infrastructure improvements, construction of the roof of Monhegan Middle School, which is very important because it will address not only ensuring that our buildings are environmentally safe and secure, but structural-wise as well to prevent any future mishaps. So I think that's something great to feel proud of, as well as the field at the high school and the parking at Carter Elementary, which is part of a longer capital project. So we're moving forward in those areas and getting ready for a promising school year. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the committee? Okay, thank you. Remarks of department heads. Director Bruni from Economic Development, please.
Good evening, everyone. Just to update you on some events happening downtown, Christmas in July, the ornament crawl is this weekend. So here it's gonna be like 99 degrees, but hey. Of course, our farmer's market continues on Saturday morning, some concert series, which will have been well-attended, continue. And don't forget, August 17th is the run for downtown. You can visit MiddletownBid.org for all these events and what's coming up. And also, on the economic development front, we've partnered with the Small Business Development Center. There's going to be a seminar on how to start your own business presented in Spanish on July 29th from 1:30 to 3:30 at Thrall Library. And that's free to the public, so we're looking forward to being a host of that event as well. And that's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Fire Chief Lewis?
Good evening, everybody. Excuse my appearance, kinda running crazy today, but anyway. Just a reminder that this Saturday is our picnic up at Davidge Park, and everyone from the council is invited. It's also our mandatory drill that we're having amongst the seven companies at Davidge, and that's at 8:00 AM. On the agenda tonight, we have, there's a resolution for the assurance of the serial bonds for the apparatus. I spoke last meeting, that the progress of the trucks, they're both nearing completion, and that's the purpose for the bonds here. Just a little history on how we go about purchasing our apparatuses, about every 20 years, we change our apparatus. Truck 3 is 23-years-old, so that's way overdue, and the hydraulics are in need of repair, so that truck is at a service as of now. And Engine 2 is 19-years-old, so that's right at the time for replacement. So that's the purpose of the purchase of the apparatus.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. DPW Commissioner Twill.
Good evening, all. Just to remind you, you know, with the situation with the Woolworth Building and the construction project, the mayor updated you the last meeting, which is basically, we are stuck, we found a fuel, underground fuel storage tank, and now we're stuck, we're at hold because we have to apply for the DEC to register the tank, then we have to get a permission to remove the tank. So that's where we are. We're exchanging emails with the DEC and the contractor. The city has approved the change order in the amount of $11,000 approximately, which is very reasonable, to take the tank out, subject to not finding any contaminated soil, assuming that the tank has ruptured. The tank has failed, and we don't think it has failed, but we'll see what happens. But we're pushing as far as we can, so this is what the recent delay in Woolworth Building is all about. In the past, during the dry weather season, I remember Council President Moss, and he used to sit here, Jacob, what's the situation of the reservoirs? What is the water level in there? How much water we have? And that was a regular reporting that I had to do with, to him at the time, because we used to hit frequent dry weather conditions. So now we have so much rain, I haven't been reported to you guys, because our reservoirs have been overflowing. Now, you look at the grass, it started getting green, getting gold and dry, not enough rain. So right now, we're at 98% capacity. So as long as we start getting, we start hitting the dry weather, I will be reporting to you about the situation in our reservoirs. Our reservoirs, when we have rain, they are usually overflowing. Our issue with our reservoirs, our storage is not large enough, and that's the problem that we are having. As long as we have enough rain in there, our reservoirs are in top shape, and they are overflowing. Once the dry season sets, then we start losing water in our reservoirs. So two reservoirs are overflowing right now, Highland and Monhegan. The one that's down, which is our main feeder, by five inches, is Shawangang Reservoir. And with that, I'll tell you also, I'll update you about the copper sulfate. There's a treatment that we start in May for our reservoirs, to use copper sulfate in there to control algae. And algae, as you read about it in the articles, it could be harmful, algae blooms in there. The state right now is paying a great attention to it, and they're trying to combat it and controlling, by controlling the watershed, and so on and so forth. So so far, we've done four treatments. The last treatment was yesterday for all of our reservoirs. So we basically, we drive the boat inside, in our reservoirs, and we spray certain amount of chemicals in there to control the algae blooms. And so far, we've been successful. It's a nasty thing, and we try to avoid it. Hopefully, it will never happen to us again, the algae bloom. And just staying with this theme, with the algae and controlling algae and impurities in the water, there is a grant application before you tonight, requesting that you approve it for CDM to help us with an application for $4 million from the state for the protection of our watershed area around our reservoirs. And that's one of the resolutions. We have several other resolutions in here. One of them is the skylight between us and the court, and there we're requesting that you award the bids for the lowest responsible bidder. We have our annual chemical supplies for the year for the water and wastewater treatment plans, and we're making a recommendation for the different awards. We have several secret projects in there that are required for the grants and required for the projects to move forward. One of them is the, for the green infrastructure for the downtown parking lots. Another one for us to apply for a grant for replacing the 24-inch low-gravity water line from the water treatment plant down to as far as we can take it down to Monhegan Avenue. This water line was built in the early 1930s, and it supplies two-thirds of the water, just one water line supplies two-thirds of the water to the city of Middletown. So hopefully, we'll get lucky and we'll get grant from the state to help us fund that project. We are already doing design work for another project, which is to replace the 20-inch line and the 12-inch line, the high-pressure, that they supply one-third of the city water, but they are older, much older. They go back to the 1890, the other water lines. So that project has already been approved. It's on the books. We're doing the design right now. And there are several others in there. As you get involved into reviewing the resolutions, if you need anything from us, we'll be happy to come out and answer them. A couple of them, just for CDM, to complete the circle with CDM Smith, because we added the resolutions late today. One of them is to apply for a grant from NYSERDA and for energy grant at the wastewater treatment plant, to find a way to capture, enhance, improve the production of methane gas from our digesters, capture it, store it, and then reintroduce it in other beneficial use, possibly for oven or sludge drying bids in there, because in order to minimize our cost for sludge disposal. So it's all connected together. So if you have any questions for me, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll be happy to discuss during the resolutions.
Any question? Alderman Johnson?
Yes, sir, thank you. I was out of town for a couple of weeks. When I got back, I had a correspondence from a resident who was concerned about the Roundabout, and he cited that there were a couple of letters to the editor about the Roundabout. Do you have any concerns about the Roundabout?
No, no, I don't. I think it's a perfect design. It's, I maintain my position about it. It's a perfect green, green infrastructure, I call it, because you don't have to stop and go like a stop sign or a traffic light. You don't have to be looking at your baby in the backseat or texting or anything like that and go through a red light and kill somebody. Speeding was, has always been an issue at the Roundabout in there. That speeding is done with, because the definition of the Roundabout, it's a traffic-calming device in there. The DOT used to, I mean, it's an extremely successful, efficient structure in there. All you have to do, just use common sense, because there were other letters to the editors saying that the Roundabout is a great thing, and people, they have to use some basic common sense, basically obey the rule, which is yield to who is inside the Roundabout. We gave a training video on our website when the Roundabout started. So we tried our best. All you gotta do, just use basic common sense. Use your blinkers, your indicators. Tell people where you're going. That's the whole key of the whole situation. Don't be presumptuous and just go through your weight around, throw your weight around, go drive wherever you want to drive. You want to turn, take this exit, put your blinker on to tell people, I'm going this way. People will know where you're going. They will accommodate for it. It's very extremely efficient, green infrastructure. We had lots of public hearings about this before we implemented it. Some people came, few people should express some oppositions over the years when we were doing the design. It was funded by DOT and their federal funding. We had to comply with all district regulations, a public hearing, and so on and so forth. You can't win them all. Some, one or two guys, or maybe a whole bunch of guys don't like it, they're never gonna like it. I regret that, but I truly believe it's extremely efficient, a traffic-control device.
Any other questions for the commissioner? Commissioner, thank you.
Yes.
City Clerk, John. Oh, did you have, I'm sorry.
Commissioner, in regard to the tank, you said $11,000 to remove the tank?
Yeah.
If it's not contaminated, why we have to remove it? Does it have to be removed if it's not contaminated?
Yes, yes, yes. DEC regulations require any tank that's been closed for, not used for one year, fuel storage tank to be removed. It's the law. It has to be removed. By the way, we're applying also for replacing one of our water storage tanks under the CFA funding and replacing the raw water lines from our reservoirs, from our reservoirs all the way to the water treatment plant. That's a multimillion-dollar project, so we're applying for grants.
Any other questions?
Lose count of it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Guess there aren't any. City Clerk, John, please.
Just an update on the municipal ID program. So far, we've issued 810 municipal IDs since March. Very good. We're doing excellent on that, I think. We're doing about maybe seven to eight, 10 a day. It's averaging out to be. Again, I'll remind the public that everything that you need is on our website. The applications are there. They're in English and in Spanish. And if there's any questions, they can call our office or come in.
Any questions for John? Okay. Public hearings and grievances?
Nothing this evening.
Petitions and complaints?
Nothing this evening.
Thank God, no remarks from the mayor? Remarks from the aldermen? Reports to committee? Alderman Burr?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Jean-François? Alderman Kleiner? No way are you saying nothing this evening?
Not too much this evening. We're gonna cancel our first meeting in August.
So you're gonna double up?
So, well, no, we have things happening that...
No, Jerry.
That we won't be able to talk about next meeting.
At your time, say whatever you want.
So, one thing I want to remind people is that there's a hearing with the DEC tomorrow at 2:00 PM and at 7:00 PM on CPV. I know that matters to quite a few people, and that's at Middletown High School on Gardner Avenue. So public comment submissions, the deadline's July 29th. So if you have something to say and an opinion on it, please go and be heard. The next, the following Wednesday, July 24th, the Orange County Planning Department, the Transportation Council is also doing public outreach. They'll be at the Mulberry House Senior Center from 4:00 to 6:00 PM on July 24th, and they're welcoming public comment on their long-term transportation plans in the county. So they would like to hear from you if you have any ideas. I would like them to think about electric buses and charging stations. It doesn't seem to be anywhere on their radar, so if I can get over, I'll bring that up. Of course, Thursday starts the Orange County Fair, the 179th Orange County Fair, runs for 10 days. I'm sure most people are aware of that. Since we won't have a meeting the night before, remind people that, and we don't have anybody from PD here tonight, that Tuesday, August 6th is night out, and it has moved back to Thrall Park. So it will not be at Davidge, and I understand from Alderman Ram Cassoon that it will be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So that's Tuesday night at Thrall Park. So don't go up to Davidge expecting to see another fireworks show. And Monday, August 12th, we will, as always, have our Second Ward Constituents Meeting, the second Monday, and we thank the mayor for coming to the last one, and I think Andrew had a long list of items that have been really amazingly addressed by the police department point by point, so I thank them for that. And also, before our next meeting, will be the run for downtown. So that's, as Maria did mention that, that's Saturday, August 17th, the run for downtown, so put that on your schedule. And then August 20th will be our next council meeting. I want to thank Alfredo for taking the time to come and speaking up about what's going on. I did go to the rally in Goshen, the Candlelight Rally, and, you know, whatever happened to family values, that was such a supposedly big conservative Republican issue, family values, but you don't hear a peep anymore. And I had a friend who's so disturbed by this that they're thinking of actually becoming a moderate Republican, and I say, "Good," because that'll make one. So I just, it does. To have people have to be afraid in their homes that, you know, their parents are gonna be taken away and have kids have that kind of fear, it's so unnecessary. So anything we can do to help, we'll try and do it. Thank you.
Alderman Ram Cassoon?
I yielded my time to Alderman Kleiner tonight. I just wish everyone a happy and safe rest of the summer, as we're only meeting one more time before school begins again. He's correct, night out will be at Thrall Park, no fireworks, 6 to 8. As for the Woolworths, Jacob, it feels like a bad episode of HGTV between Maple Hill, "Oh, we have to dredge this pond, and you can only use a certain claw," and now our tank. So it is what it is, right? It's why I don't open walls in my old house. But I'm glad to see at least we're moving forward. We do what we gotta do. That's all I've got. Have a good night.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you so much. For Alfredo, you're doing a yeoman's job of trying to hold it all together. There's clearly an initiative to create fear in this country, and so far, it's been very successful. And more than one person has looked at what's happening today and thought about a time in history that nobody wants to remember. I'll leave it at that. How do you fix it? How do you remind a three-year-old that the knock on the door is not gonna be bad, it's gonna be good? Might be it's your grandpa coming to visit. How do you do that? I don't know how you do that, but it sends most of us to think about it. And thank you for your good work.
Alderman Green?
Thank you. Yes, Alfredo, definitely. Beyond thank you for what you and Nobody Leaves from Hudson are doing for your community, I mean, our community in the end, really. It affects each one of us. You know, I know I hate reading headlines or reading Facebook posts or seeing, you know, just the fear, and something that I'll never understand, I'm sure, fully in my heart, you know, what it feels like to be afraid to open the front door. But something that certainly I can't believe we have to be talking about at any point in our country's history. So, you know, thank you for doing all you can, and like Alderman Kleiner said, we certainly will do all we can in support, in solidarity with you. So thank you for that. I do also want to just thank the mayor as well for joining us for our constituents meeting. It was very nice. We got a lot of good discussion, and, you know, thank you to DPW Commissioner, Chief Huanchu, and our neighborhood enhancement officers who were there for the citywide watch meeting as well. You know, we got a lot of good information out of that, some new faces, which is always nice, so we'd like to see that growing. You know, and pretty much like Kate said, have a good rest of the summer. We'll see you in August.
Thank you. I have something I just want to bring to everyone's attention, especially the people who work for the city of Middletown, and by the way, that includes us. I don't know if you have spoken to or if you've seen this flyer from Chief Huanchu, Police Chief. He went out and he did an outstanding job. We actually have a screening for strokes, heart attacks. There are certain dates on here. It's August 7th and 9th at 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and August 8th... It's August 7th and 9th at 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and August 8th, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. You have to make arrangements to, for the appointment. But anyone that doesn't take advantage of this is very foolish. I can tell you, having had heart problems on several occasions, and I will absolutely go do this, it's a wonderful thing that the chief did. He learned about it, I guess, through the state police, went and witnessed theirs, and for those days, but you do have to make an appointment. And I'm sorry that it doesn't include the general public, but in case people have not gotten the flyer that works for the city or you people are not aware of it, and like I say, it was all done through Chief Huwanchu. Unfinished business?
Nothing this evening.
New business?
Okay, we have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Ram Cassoon, to declare two buses for the Mulberry House Senior Center surplus.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Ram Cassoon. Any questions, comments? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, to accept a donated shuttle bus from the town of Waukegan for the Senior Center.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any questions, comments? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ram Cassoon, to declare the common council lead agency for the traffic improvements project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ram Cassoon. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Burr, to approve the bid for the Skylight Roof renovation project.
Alderman's, yeah, a resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner and seconded by Alderman Burr. Comments, questions? I know, go on, Jerry.
I just want to say, I'm so happy to sponsor this. This is the skylight and roof over our handicapped entrance to the city court and city hall. And it's been partially fixed, but this will be great to have it completely dry. Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Johnson, to approve the bids for chemicals.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Green, to authorize a treasurer to accept a $5,000 donation from ShopRite supermarkets to be applied toward the 2019 Stars and Stripes Celebration Weekend.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Green. Any comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any comments or questions? Roll. Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Burr, to declare the 1998 Chevrolet truck for the use by the Downtown Business Improvement District surplus.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green, to declare the intent on the city of Middletown to act as lead agency for the improvements to the water system improvement project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ram Cassoon, to determine that the action to design and construct the water system improvement project is a type one action and will not have any significant adverse impact on the environment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ram Cassoon. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Green, authorizing the issuance of $1,587,923,000 in serial bonds to pay the cost of the purchase of fire trucks.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Green. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, authorizing the issuance of an additional $60,000 in bonds to pay part of the cost of the purchase of real property for watershed expansion.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, to cancel the common council meeting on Monday, August 5th, 2019.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Comments, questions? Roll.
Is there a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jerry.
That's all right. I just was gonna explain that we would have trouble getting a quorum for that meeting anyway, so that's why we're canceling it. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Burr, to approve the dispersment of lead service grant.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Burr. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson, to apply for the 2019 CFA grant under the Empire State Development Grant Fund for a parking garage with the city funding for the parking garage in the amount not to exceed $4.8 million.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Comments, questions?
Mr. Chair. I just wanted to point out, I was not at the last meeting. I know that was discussed in executive session. I have a correspondence from the mayor, and I met with him, and I'm up to speed on the project, and that's why I support it. And I think it's another great idea for downtown Middletown moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Burr, to approve a notice of determination of non-significant pursuant to secre of the parking garage project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Burr. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Johnson, to declare the old Fowler lights to be declared surplus and to donate the old Fowler field lights to the Port Jervis Football League.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Comments, questions? Alderman Kleiner?
I just want to clarify that on our latest, latest, latest agenda, it's Fowler, F-A-L-L-E-R.
And that's, that is the spelling.
I After Ed Fowler.
I grew up with him.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Yes, Alderman?
The field lights we got from the Middletown School District, correct, years ago?
They were taken down from the field itself, and they've been in storage.
They've been sitting in our thing for over five years, so
Absolutely.
It's a good thing.
Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ram Cassoon, to approve CDM Smith services for the WQIP land acquisition projects for the source water protection.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ram Cassoon. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Burr, to approve CDM Smith for application assistance for the DEC EFC Water Infrastructure Engineering Plant Planning Grant.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Burr. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, to approve CDM Smith to apply for a grant from the NY Serta for FlexTech for Energy Efficiency Technical Analysis.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. That is all for new business.
All right, before we go on, Commissioner Twill, I know you wanted to speak.
I just wanted to, about regarding Woolworth Building, it's still on track to be done by September, and a lot of work is being done for the tenants in there. And Maria, I think she knows more, she deals with the tenants on a daily basis, if you want to update them. Maria, about the tenants' work that's taking place inside Woolworth Building?
Thank you, Jacob. Yeah, Oak and Reed, Painted Horse Chocolate, Farmer Baker, they're all working on their tenant build-out, so that's progressing very nicely. So they're on track with their goals to complete and open their businesses. So all that, like Jacob said, interior-wise, is still moving, so we're pretty good on that end.
Thank you both. And before we end with the meeting, just want to remind everyone that the next council meeting will be Tuesday, August 20th. All right, local laws?
Nothing this evening.
Audits and claims.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to be audited, the claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
Seconded by Alderman Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
No move.
We're adjourned.